Evening, it is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 at 7 o'clock. I'd ask everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as a reminder this evening, this meeting is being aired live on Facebook and will be recorded. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open, open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order, imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no person attendance allowed. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. Okay, there are no condolences this evening. I'm going to move right into approval of the minutes from our March 9th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Fred Chase. Any questions or any discussion on that? Counselor Fitzgibbons?
No, thank you.
Counselor Chase?
No, there's none, thank you.
Any other counselors? Hearing none requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
All of us staying, I was not at the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Six in favor, none against.
Excellent, moving on. B, announcements from the President. The President is not with us here tonight. I have no announcements on his behalf. We'll next move to C, proclamations. There are no proclamations this evening. Moving right to D, citizens' open forum. We would ask anybody that would like to speak tonight to please state your name and your home address for the record. I would ask that you keep your remarks to under three minutes. I would also ask that everyone be respectful and no intended or disrespectful comments directed towards any members of the town council, the town manager, or any town employees. With that, do we have anyone that would like to speak? In citizens' open forum. And if you could let me know if you see anybody.
Ms. Sheridan looks like she wants to, Mr. President.
Okay, did you say Sheridan?
Ms. Sheridan, Jill Sheridan.
Okay, Ms. Sheridan, would you like to speak?
We can't hear you unfortunately.
I don't see her in my list. And do you see anyone else with a raised hand?
I see Ms. Sheridan, it looks like she's trying to work on her audio. I can see your video, but I cannot hear you, Ms. Sheridan.
Okay, I see her now. She's unmuted, so.
Yeah, she's unmuted, I'm not real sure, but how about if we go to, Mr. Baumgarten, you look like you have, were you?
I have no comments.
Nope, great.
No.
Jill, another couple of minutes, see if she can get that on.
Mr. Vice President threw you to the council, do we got it? No. If I may just suggest we continue on the agenda and allow Mrs. Sheridan to speak when she has figured out her technical issues later in the meeting, but you know, when it's appropriate. You know, I don't want to hold it till the end, that's silly, but we can make, we can make an appointment and you know, and then try to come back to her. But that's up to you.
Well, what I'd like to do is see if there's anybody else that can step in and have comments. I see Mr. Rogan with his hand up, if you'd like to speak to Mr. Rogan.
Can you hear me?
Excellent, all set.
Excellent, thank you. Stephen Rogan, 36 Howard Street. I was initially going to come here speaking to you as like a volunteer for the, for the town. Talking about, I sit on a few boards, but I'm actually going to be speaking to you just as a resident of Bridgewater. So thank you for, thank you for hearing me. Instead of speaking as someone on the council, I'm speaking as a Bridgewater resident.
I think it's fixed.
You got it, Jill?
Oh, sorry, I just fixed my audio, I'm on my own laptop, I'm on my son, so sorry for that interruption. I'll speak after Steve, excuse me.
Sounds good, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm just speaking as a resident. Basically, against, there was an event that was held on Saturday at Legion Field, and I'm just speaking as a resident against the views that were, that were presented and at that, at that event. Now, the festival was presented to the, to the police department as a political protest. And in doing so, it was allowed to be held. What truly was, if it truly was a political protest, everyone should have the right to speak. Everyone should have the right to voice their opinion. That I fully agree with, everyone should have that right. Unfortunately, the organizers of this festival, Freedom Festival, one being a, a business owner in town, they showed their lack of, of integrity and trust by presenting it as a, as a protest when in fact it was a festival. And what happened was, they had speakers, they had, they had speakers, they had vendors, they had, they were selling wares. These are things that, things like Christmas on the Common, Autumn Fest, Fourth of July, these are things that usually like you need to have a permit for. And so what seemed to have been done, it was, it was presented as, as an event, as a festival without a permit. I can go into talking about having permits or not permits, that doesn't matter. If, even if they were permitted, they were still able to, they would go through the permitting process and still have their event. What I'm speaking about is, what was, and what was presented there at that, at that festival was a lot of extremist dialogue, a lot of just self-centered disregard for the common, for the common good of the citizens of Bridgewater and people as a whole. And I just want to make, make a statement saying that like as a resident, I don't want that, what was shown there to be the perception of Bridgewater. And we're a community that was, our origins are based on education. We had the first, we have the first state normal school in, in the state. What we saw, what was presented there was the complete opposite of what, of what Bridgewater stands for. And what we need to do, I would, I would like to make sure that Bridgewater is a place that diverse, like-minded people feel protected and valued and sharing their opinions. Sharing their opinions and not, not to spread what I felt was hate speak. So I just want to say that as a resident and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan, we appreciate your comments. Go back to Mrs. Sheridan.
Yeah, hi there, so my name's Jill Sheridan. I'm a resident of 1101 Pleasant Street in Bridgewater. I just wanted to make a statement to kind of bear witness to those same events that occurred on Saturday, March 20th at Legion Field. So as a former member of Stand Up For Justice, I helped organize dozens of peaceful demonstrations over the past year without a single incident. So on Saturday, I attended a vigil for Breonna Taylor on Saturday morning, like we planned and discussed. And then I independently decided to counter protest the euphemistically named Freedom Festival, which I quickly learned was an alt-right rally. So prior to the event, Police Chief Del Monte and Captain McDermott requested to meet with myself and another woman to make sure we would be peaceful. During the meeting, they confirmed that they had seen the 314 video featuring Samantha Muse on a radio show called Red Pill Politics, on which she and co-host David Kopass repeatedly referred to the event as a festival, complete with vendors, food, and live music. It was not described as a political rally at all. It was really described as a family-friendly event. So Mr. Kopass is a public personality who chartered a bus from Ware, Massachusetts to attend the terrorist attack on the Capitol on January 6th. He publicly aligns with the Constitution Party that advocates for voter suppression, education control, racist immigration policies, and a return to Judeo-Christian values. So yeah, I clearly know First Amendment rights apply to these views as well as to my own. That wasn't the problem with the day. The event, as Steve said, was not permitted, and according to our town website, Legion Field can be used by town groups or organizations for a fee with the permission of the Recreation Commission. Permits are required, so that's from the website. Over the summer, I myself inquired about holding one of our weekly demonstrations at Legion Field, and I was told we would need to pay a fee and have a permit 30 days prior. But the Freedom Festival was oddly exempt from that. So naturally, the event, you know, attracted a lot of attention from activist groups in the area. And you know, the counter protest wasn't locally organized, and there wasn't any plan of action or leadership at the local level. But when people hear stuff like that, they do, you know, it raises eyebrows. So I personally requested that legal observers from the National Lawyers Guild be present as observers. And as I approached the field, I noticed a huge vendor trailer set up with flags, shirts, and gear for sale in support of the alt-right conspiracy group QAnon, Stop the Steal flags, Super Happy Fun America, which is a straight pride group, and various other like fringe propaganda type stuff. And there was, you know, that heavy police presence. We started to walk towards the field and peacefully, we weren't even cohesive, we were just kind of like spreading out. A man ran towards us with a large German shepherd stating that I'll turn him on you if you take one step further. The attendees of it, which were all out of towners and maskless, were very aggressive to us. And we noticed too that a lot of the officers were unmasked. So the mandate was still in place because it was prior to March 22nd. So as you likely know, we have to wear masks in public until we reach herd immunity and several variants of COVID-19 are present. We've seen a local uptick, and we're trying to open our schools in two weeks. So the timing was, you know, really poor. I'm a biology teacher, you know, I take the lead from medical and scientific experts very seriously. And I believe it was a leadership failure from the Board of Health, law enforcement, and whoever else to allow hundreds of maskless people from out of town to ignore this. So two of the featured speakers were Susan Iani and Mark Sahadi, who were both under investigation by the FBI for domestic terrorism. Mr. Sahadi was filmed inside the Capitol on January 6th, and where many other Freedom Rallyers too were in attendance in the Capitol. A group on social media called We The People, who were part of the rally organizers, stated publicly on social media that "an army of law," and this is a quote, please, "an army of law enforcement from surrounding towns, a large percentage of whom volunteered, turned out to protect children and families participating in the worldwide Freedom Rally." Courtney Andre, the event organizer, wrote, "Here are the brave police who," in capital letters, "volunteered to be at this event to keep everyone safe." That being said.
Mrs. Sheridan, if I could just interrupt, you're hitting your three-minute timeframe, okay?
Could I have, could I request one more minute, please? Because this last part is very important.
Okay, we have a lot of speakers here tonight, so if you could just get to that last point in your meeting, I just want to make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity to discuss.
Sure, and I apologize, this is just really important.
No worries.
There's a video of me requesting an officer intervene because a woman was following me around, hitting me, touching me. She was blowing on me because she doesn't have to wear a mask. I requested two officers standing right there to just ask her to not touch me. She was putting her camera on my face and blowing in my face. They ignored me, I have this on camera. The only events, arrests that occurred were two counter protesters who were attacked by a Freedom Rallyer. And I just saw on the 5 o'clock news that they were charged with resisting arrest, and we have camera footage that that is absolutely not the case. And the attacker, attacker was actually described as the victim. So I'm wondering if the town funded an alt-right rally and provided police security for that? And if they didn't, you need to answer to that because it sure looks like that's exactly what happened. And I don't know how else to state that. And my last question is, you know, this is embarrassing. The private groups and taxpayers shouldn't have to foot the bill for stuff like this. Who paid for the detail? Who paid for the space? And lastly, what are we going to do about it? If I sound angry about it, I am.
No, that's fine, we appreciate your comments and thank you for coming tonight to discuss your concerns with the town council. We appreciate it.
Hey, no problem.
Thank you. And do you have anybody else?
I do, I have somebody chatting with me, their name on their screen is Daniels.
Daniels, you're next, if you'd like to speak, if you could, your full name and address. And just if you could, keep to the three-minute time limit, please.
Sure, Jeff Daniels, I'm 20 McCall Avenue here in Bridgewater. My kids and I went for a walk and stopped by that event as well. I have to be honest, like people were really actually kind to us there and out at the front gate, I don't remember the lady's name, but she was organizing it, Samantha. And, and they were, they just told us about why they were meeting to support local small businesses, rights to be open, things like that. And I don't know, it was actually, our kids ran around and played with some of the other kids that were there. There were some tables of local businesses and people there. I don't really know, I didn't stop by any of those tables to see what they were doing. The only negative experience that we had were actually counter protesters who yelled at my children and I as we were walking down the street by the, by the counter protester or by the, whatever you call that, the basketball courts where they were hanging up signs and things. And so I had a very different experience than.
What did the signs say, maybe we should share that?
Mrs. Sheridan, Mrs. Sheridan, you cannot speak, you've had your opportunity. I just ask anybody, do not speak unless the floor is yours, and right now it is Mr. Daniels' place.
Thank you. I appreciate the other perspectives here. I think it is, it is important that, especially during times right, like, like right now where things are so volatile that we, we do allow different views to be communicated, even if we don't agree with those views. So I actually appreciated meeting people of all kinds of different views that were out there, and they were kind to us. I didn't, I didn't personally witness any, any thing more than I'm experiencing right now on this call. But it's, you know, I just, that's all I have to say, is it was actually a good experience for us when we walked by.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels, for coming before the council and providing those comments to us, we appreciate it. And do we have anybody else?
Yes, actually, I had Mark Lindy.
Mark Lindy, you're all set, if you'd like to speak, please.
Good evening, counselors, thank you for the opportunity to speak during citizen comment. I just wanted to let everybody know that I am, I love this town. I've enjoyed being here since I moved here, but I'm worried. What came into our town on Saturday was a hate group. And I do not think that outside agitators coming into Bridgewater should be allowed. One thing, freedom of speech is fine, but from what I saw on the videos, I'll be honest with you, I was afraid to go out on Saturday. I participated in most of the standouts on the Common, they were peaceful, they were respectful. I think any of the officers would agree with that. But what happened on Saturday is scary. Look at what happened in this country on January 6th, I don't want to see it happen in Bridgewater on a regular basis. And I think that if there weren't permits that were pulled, my question would be, why not? I think if you have a public event and there's a process that the process has to be followed. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy, we appreciate your comments, and thank you for coming out tonight to speak to us. And do we have anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Baumgarten.
Hi, Sam Baumgarten, 60 Short Street. I hadn't planned on speaking, but I just wanted to follow up on this issue of the use of Legion Field. Chief Del Monte called a meeting for the groups that were coming to this event or that were busy on Saturday. BCCR had a standout from 10 to 12. And Stand Up For Justice, as you already know, was on the Common as well. Chief Del Monte said to me that there were no particular restrictions on using Legion Field. So I'm confused now, is there a permitting process or isn't there? And if there was, why wasn't it followed? Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Do we have anybody else, Anne?
I don't see anybody offhand, but I'd like to just scroll through one more time.
Sure, absolutely. I want to make sure nobody misses an opportunity.
Right.
I don't see anything on my end.
No. I don't see any raised hands and I don't have any new chat requests.
Okay, all right, excellent. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and speaking. We're going to move to, next is going to be E, appointments. We have Julia Santijilo, I have any trouble pronouncing that one, Planning Board alternate, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Right, second?
Second. Second.
Okay, Counselor Fitzgibbons? Any questions?
No, thank you to Mrs. or Ms., I'm going to try harder than Mr. Vice President Santa Carne Jello, but I'm not even going to do it myself, but thank you for stepping up to a very important board.
Absolutely. Mr. Gallagher, any questions?
No, I just want to thank Julia Santa Kangello, how's that? I think the R is silent, Santa Kangello, thank you for stepping up to serve the town.
Thank you. Any other comments from any other counselors? Hearing none requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Excellent, moving on, letter F, hearings, there are none. Letter G, licensed transactions, there are none. Letter H, presentations, Fire Department update, Acting Fire Chief Michael McDermott. Acting Chief McDermott, the floor is yours, I appreciate you waiting for us for this presentation, looking forward to your presentation to the council.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody's having a better day than we did. 2020 was a trying year for most, was sad for others. Our run volumes have slightly decreased, probably due to the lack of the college being in session for the full year. We usually run about 6,600 calls, this year we did just under 6,000. So it's an average of 16 calls a day. We provide both ambulance service, two ambulances on call, and a third can be delivered in a short period of time. Recently, I'm not sure if people are aware, if you drive around the community, our residential development has increased exponentially in multiple locations. A large portion has been done to the west side of the community with both Summit and Lake Shore Drive adding 300 units in each. Those are five-story buildings. Just for a response time alone to those locations, it's about 4.1 miles out of the center. It's approximately an eight-minute ETA to get to that location. That is in today's traffic, about 10 o'clock in the morning, just after rush hour, and not through the school times when they're either going to school or letting out from school. This presents a difficulty to us, there are six stoplights going from the center of our community out to those locations. The furthest point that we have to protect is Birch Hill Road, and that is on the other side of the Lake Nip. These present a problem. Again, what we're looking at is, I'm sure everybody's aware through the different things that are being presented in our community that we are looking at a new fire station for obvious reasons to most. If anybody is not aware, we do have a diagram online through ServPro, came in and did a 3D exam of our building. Upon doing so, you can access the building, see what the fire station looks like, even if you've never walked inside. You can pick out the stains on the walls, the holes in the walls, the different architecture. This building was not the first fire station in town, it was the second fire station. First was built on the corner of Main Street and Union Street. This one was built shortly thereafter. One of the gentlemen, I think it was Mr. Rogan, brought up the normal school. Shortly after the normal school burned, the fire department was organized and put in its current location. And the building was built to base station for about $4,000, almost $5,000 in the two-year period. Since then, it's been added upon multiple times, the early 1900s and the 1970s. You'll see the larger addition that accommodates most of the newer vehicles that are far larger than the older portion of the station currently in. The office I'm in right now, I was told by one of the retired fire chiefs, George Sweeney, if you pull down the ceilings, you can still find the location where they had the horse collars, when the horses would come from Doors Stable across the street in Central Common. It would run over here when they were let go from their duty there delivering freight and take the fire, the steamers to the different calls. Again, to educate a little, we do have a new fire station, new for its time. It's about 14 years old, 15 years old at this time, and that's at 774 Plymouth Street. We would be looking to build a new station out towards the western part of the community. One, the location that we're in has a greater value to revitalize our central business district. And two, it would give us easier response time going to that side of the community where the developments are growing. That's not to say that we don't have other developments planned. We have Curb Street with 175 houses. Anybody that's driven down Plymouth Street can see 85 Plymouth Street, that's another 56 apartments. We have another one planned on Broad Street, Main Street, both in the high 50s, excuse me, low 50s. And also on the western side of the community where we have Magnolia in Oldfield. They've just parked in the past several years and have built almost 160 houses to this time that have been inspected and now are lived in. Under the fire department, we're also we're also charged to take care of the emergency management in the community. This is done through both the same personnel, but at the same time, a volunteer organization called CERT. There are several key members that in this past year that deserve recognition. Denise Carrizola, Christopher Drown, Lisa Buzzi-Curley. These are the type of people that you don't hear about on a regular basis, but you probably should. They deliver kindness from everything, from delivering meals on wheels, shopping for our people in our community that weren't able to either get out because of their age or sometimes fear of possibly catching COVID-19. They're also the type of people that went around in the heatwaves in July and checked on our elderly at multiple different locations in our community, both at senior housing and to some of the other developments in our community that house the elderly. These are the, these are the type of people that make this community worth living in because they're the type of the people that get the job done, you never hear about them, but their kindness goes far beyond, far beyond all of the other things that are happening in our world today. That to me, I've lived here 54 years, I can mention things about Kim Williams, who has gone out in, when we couldn't get PPE from our regular, PPE to everybody that's listening is personal protective equipment. When we couldn't get it from our regular vendors, she would go out to different stores and had a route of some 50 or 60 miles in a weekend on her off time and make sure that we had our own PPE. We also have businesses in our community that use PPE for the different types of construction or cleaning businesses that donated that people will never know about. But at the same time, they live in this community and they deliver both that service, that caring, and that kindness back to this community. But at the same time, they live in this community and they deliver both that service, that caring and that kindness back to this community. I'd like to see that's what this is all about. You could go on and on about the fire department, what we do, what we're able to do. The best thing is, you don't even know we're here. Similar to the police department, when the service is delivered and you don't see us, when you wake up in the morning, when you shut your door at night and you don't hear what's going on, that's when we're doing our best job. When you hear about it, that's when something's really going wrong. I'll be honest, I'm not the best public speaker. That's pretty much all I have. I'll answer any questions you have. Right now, we're about a six point three million dollar budget. We have fifty-one people that work at the fire department. We're missing five, excuse me, four through retired, being retired, and one is out extended sick. At the same time, we've pulled out about two point one million dollars in ambulance receipts that comes back into the town. I think we're able to provide a great service to this community. And no disrespect to anybody. I hope you don't see me, because if you do, there's a problem.
Thank you very much, Chief. I'm gonna open it up to Town Council comments. I see Council Gallagher. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President, whatever. And thank you, Chief, for, for coming in and giving us an update. Can you just tell us and the public in the past year, what have been some of the biggest upticks in, in calls and in services that you've had to provide? What has been some of the biggest upticks this past year for your department?
One of the bigger things that we've had thrust upon us, and we take it willingly, has been helping out or assisting in both delivering vaccine to both homebound people and having clinics when we've been able to get the vaccine. Two different individuals, both first responders. Upon doing that, first responders at the police department, the fire department, other area towns, Bridgewater State University, and the ancillary staff that was able to move different people when they had to go into quarantine. That was probably one of the biggest differences of what we've been able to provide this year. As far as what we do, we do everything from brush fires to medicals, fire investigations, motor vehicle accidents, health and welfare checks, mutual aid to other towns, technical rescue, hazmat. This year alone, with the new construction, Elm Street in residential, we're dealing with about a thousand forty-four new inspections.
Thank you.
I counsel what?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I, I agree with everybody here. Your, your team does a fantastic job. You know, you were, you were, you, you came to the rescue of my family last year, so all is good. So one of the things that people don't realize during the budget process and some of the things that we've talked about in the past during the budget process is the cycle times for the ambulances. You, you touched upon the ambulance service a little bit, but can you go into a little more detail so that people here and at home know what, what, you know, what I'm talking about with the ambulance cycle times and how long an ambulance is out of service on a call, that sort of thing, and why the manpower and the backup is so important?
Similar to any job, it's changed since I first started. Our location dictates part of it as far as time and as far as travel. Sometimes you'll see an engine respond with us to different locations. That's for assistance. That's to expedite the call, also add personnel, manpower, for lack of a better word. We're dealing with a turnaround cycle. This last year in the uptick of COVID, we added a COVID dedicated ambulance because of the cleaning and the amount of time that the ambulance would be taken out of service. We're dealing with about an hour to an hour and a half with the cleaning, extra, and go an hour to two hours on the COVID calls. So anybody that's either positive or could be positive or had an exposure, the ambulance was getting thoroughly cleaned, sprayed down with a chemical that would dust and then wipe down the interior of the ambulance, so we would not either infect our personnel or infect anyone else. We also had people fully dressed in PPE. They look like a Martian. They come in in either a big or blue suit or a big white suit covered from head to toe, mask. They would go in and initially evaluate the patient and then see if they needed any more assistance to extract the patient from their, either their home or their apartments. So the timing is about an hour to an hour and a half. That includes everything from the delivery of the patient, treating the patient with the skills that they have, the paramedics, they're able to cardiac monitor, give meds. They're able to intubate if a person is not able to breathe on their own or their breathing cycle is less than twelve to fourteen a minute. They can assist in that along with medications that are delivered. But when they get to the hospital, excuse me, sometimes it takes a little bit longer because they have to go to the pharmacy or the Pyxis and get the medications. So they can be about an hour and a half to an hour and forty-five minute turnaround. Some of them get it down pat and they're out in like an hour and fifteen minutes. And sometimes you have problems with the computer and transferring the information to both the nursing staff in the hospital, and it takes a little bit longer. Did that answer the question, Mr. Wood?
Yes, it did. So generally, you're saying when an ambulance goes on a run, needs to go to the hospital, that particular ambulance and crew is, is out of service. They're providing service, but they're out of service to the town for about ninety minutes. And that's backup ambulances and backup teams.
So we, we run two ambulances on a regular basis. You'll also see, as I've spoken with Mike and Kim explaining how the fire department runs. You'll see the two ambulances, an engine at each station. You'll see the tower at station two. The people at station two can cross man any one of those three vehicles and are jumping depending upon what's needed. It may not seem like a lot, but if you forget your computer going to work, Mr. Wood, you can go home and get it. If our people forget their PPE going to work, we have a serious problem because now we're down that other person. The other part, a lot of people years ago, when we had staffing problems, when the ambulance was at station two and it was out thirty to fifty percent of the time, station two would not have been manned for that timeframe that that ambulance was out. In the sixteen runs, station two does a little bit over a third of our runs. So that station, if it was only manned with an ambulance, would be out for anywhere from nine to twelve hours.
Counselor Wood, anything else?
No, that's great. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other members of the council, also Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thanks for coming in, Chief. I appreciate it. Just a couple of things to follow up. Last week, we had the, or last meeting, we had the police chief and talking about length of time to staff a position. Could you talk about how long it takes for you to have an opening and how long it takes to you for someone to actually come in and fill the position for you?
Mr. Fitzgibbons, if you have a person that is cross-trained or fire academy trained and they are currently working paramedic, if they have that fire academy training, three months to six months, depending upon their location. If they live close to this community, they have an idea of what we do, what the roads are, what the streets are. It's six months to a year. Is basically what the answer can be. If they already have training and knowledge of firefighting and paramedics, they can be put out in almost six months. If they're have to go to the fire academy, they already have their paramedic. That's one of the criteria. They're probably about a year before they're of value to us. And to give back the value for training them for that year, you're looking at between five and seven years to give it back.
Yes, so it's a good, it's a good long time. It's, it's, it's quite a ramp up, which is what, what I assumed, but I wanted folks on, on the call and on Facebook to understand. And then I just had, I just had one question and then one observation, Mr. Mr. President. The question is, Chief, you had said the furthest we need to respond is is out to the nip there on oh, what, what's the road, Chief? You just said.
Yeah, this would be going to the west would be Birch Hill Road.
Birch Hill Road. Do, do we have any, do we have any response liability to Black Mallard Road?
We also have that also, that, that too, sir.
That's a little bit of a strange thing going on there, out there. But it's, I was just curious because that's a little bit further down the road there, so. And I have a friend that I grew up with who lives there, so I want to make sure we're taking care of him and his wife and his beautiful children. Yeah. And my last observation is, my parents moved here in nineteen sixty-nine and they moved out in nineteen, in twenty seventeen or eighteen, somewhere in there. They didn't quite make fifty years. But when I was helping him clean their house out, and my father was a pack rat, I found a league of women voters pamphlet from nineteen sixty-nine that talked about the next big capital project was a fire station on the west side of town because of the growth. So they'll be really happy to find out that finally this is going to be coming true if we actually put one over there on the west side of town. It won't have helped them, but they'll, they'll be happy to know it. Thank you.
If I, if I remember correctly, that is, that is something that was brought up years ago from Chief Sweeney, that it was a fire station being presented. I think one of the biggest drawbacks of a firefighter, we're all, we're all type A personalities. We try to fix a problem. Sometimes when it's just broken.
Also Fitzgibbons, is that it?
Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other town counselors? I don't see any, so I guess I will chime in here first. Chief McDermott, thank you very much for spending a few minutes with us tonight to talk about the fire department. I think it was very selfishly described by you, the members of the CERT team, and very humble to mention Denise, Lisa, Chris, and some of the other members that have helped out unknowingly to many residents in town unless they needed them, members of the CERT team. And I think as a council member, I'd like to work with you to formally recognize members of the CERT team at some point for everything that they've done throughout COVID. Certainly for you as the fire chief, you had mentioned you were down six hundred calls a result of most likely BSU and the reduced population on campus. Can you just quickly talk about what that financial impact was to you as a department?
We have a meeting tomorrow with the ambulance billing company and the finance. From what I'm being shown and told, we're approximately three hundred thousand dollars less in revenue than what we have been in the past in that same timeframe. That was predominantly in the fall that we started to go down. And that would have been when Bridgewater State came back at lesser of resident, residential housing.
Okay, and just to follow up, you know, you've obviously talked about the fire department tonight and what you do for the town. But as a town council member, what is it, is there one thing or two things as a fire chief that the town council could be trying to accomplish on your department's behalf?
Yes, one of the biggest things in the fire service is you would have, rather have more of a response in the first ten minutes than three times the response in the next half hour, because that's when you can do the most good with the least amount of people. Again, part of our job is delivering this service. And by doing that, we understand that it's also costs money. But the personnel, that's where the rubber meets the road in all of our departments. That goes from town offices to the police, to the highway, to the fire. Our personnel are our biggest advantage in that they buy into our community and they believe in what we're all trying to accomplish. The change of government that happened several years ago, I have to admit, was definitely, definitely a step forward. The people through the transition and now that are running the town have made it leaps and bounds. When I first started, it was a year-to-year plan, and I'm here now. Your organization is looking five and ten years down the road to do the right thing for the departments. They're planning, and they're planning on our future and our children's future in this community. And that's very important. I, I don't think it was done before because I don't think it was almost like somebody getting hit. They just kept getting hit so they couldn't stop and realize what to do. The people that are in the positions now are doing that, and they're making a difference.
Thank you, Chief. And just to follow up, when you talked about reduction of response time, would I, would I be in the right if I said that not only personnel, but if we can build a fire station on the west side of town, that in, that in fact would, we'd see a reduction in response time to half of our community?
So that, that is correct. The two biggest things that we're looking to do is getting into a national standard of a three to four minute response time. If you draw circles in our community, we would be on the two outer portions, working back towards the middle. Again, it's, it would be the right thing to do at this time to be looking in that vein, to lessen the response time to go out onto the highway. February tenth, a baby was delivered by our A five crew with our engine one. That's an eight to ten minute response time to go Burger King northbound. Couple pulled over in our community and they delivered a small four-pound baby boy. Again, the COVID ambulance, Mr. Wood asked about the turnaround time. One of the days, the COVID ambulance was in place last spring through Chief Levy's guidance. That COVID ambulance was the only ambulance left in town when a young boy was hit up at first, excuse me, Scotland Boulevard and Pleasant Street, and that probably made the difference in his life. Again, the timing is everything, kind of like real estate and location. It's everything. Those extra couple of minutes, it makes a world of difference, world of difference.
And I promise, Chief, this will be the last question, but you brought it up, so.
You've used up your three wishes. We're done.
Your COVID ambulance, could you just talk so residents understand how that ambulance extra staffing was paid for and, you know, how that benefited our community over the last year?
So that is part of the CARES Act that was recently extended in January. That went from January of, excuse me, February first of last year through December thirty-first of this year. That has allowed us to buy equipment, PPE, different things that have either worn out or needed to be replaced. We have also been able to get equipment that was on our capital expenditures. One of them was a machine to do CPR on a patient. And that's to lessen the exposure of our personnel in the back of an ambulance. This machine does compressions for us going to the hospital. And for an old guy like me, that's a big change. But COVID ambulance was one of our realigned ambulances. So we have an ambulance, and ambulance has a lifespan of anywhere from one to five years. That's about two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand miles on that vehicle in that turnaround. And then it has a two-year to a four-year, two-year to a five-year shelf life after, depend upon how it was maintained and how the maintenance went on that vehicle. That's what our A four is. It's one of our oldest, oldest, oldest ambulances in the fleet. And it was able to come to our assistance at a time when we needed it. And by putting it out there and putting those extra two personnel on per shift, which got billed to the CARES, it allowed us to give that extra to the community. It's also allowed us to assist in the vaccination process, both at the Kelly Gym at Hemlock Drive at our housing. It's also allowed us to start in a very small portion, not through anybody else's, but not being able to get the vaccine, but allowed us to go into the seniors' homes and help deliver the vaccine to people who couldn't get to mass vaccination sites. If anybody here has any line to someone in the Department of Public Health and can get us vaccine, you get us vaccine, we'll deliver it. We're have, we're having a problem. The mass vaccination sites are doing a great job. We know our community better than anybody else, and we can deliver it. We have the backing of our local medical control, Dr. Muse, Dr. Crowley, who have been advocates for all of us to try to help our community. We still can't get it. I don't think there's enough being made, but it's still being doled out to those larger facilities, larger commercial facilities. So I got Matt.
All right, understood. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the two clinics that you had held at the Bridgewater Housing Authority. To your point, many were immobile and didn't have transportation or relatives still around to help them to get to regional vaccine clinics, so I'm sure many residents benefited from that, and we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Can I grab, actually, Matt, you won't find me doing this much, so. Can I grab? Actually, Matt, you you won't find me doing this much, so. I did have, I did, I did have the opportunity to go into a home in our community. Uh two people who grew up in Bridgewater, one moved here when there was three houses on Forest Street. The uh other, they met just shortly after World War Two and have been married since. Hundred and one year old woman and her husband, excuse me, a hundred year old woman and a hundred and one year old husband. That was probably one of the best experiences I've had in my whole life, being able to sit down and talk to them. I stayed, I think, almost until six thirty that night to have that conversation with them. One of the things that sat with me, probably the hottest, they told me that if they were not able to get the vaccine delivered to their house, they wouldn't have gotten the vaccine. One, because they had heard horror stories about people going to Gillette. I know from my own family, my mother and father wouldn't have been able to walk and stand for hours to get into that facility. Even a half hour would have been too much, especially in the cold. Those people made my whole whole day. They were fantastic. My whole week was bright just because of that. That's it. Sorry, Matt. I'm done.
That's perfectly fine, chief. Thank you for sharing it with us. And again, thank you very much for coming in tonight. Uh we'll now move to the town managers' report. Uh we'll start with the Mitchell School update. Uh Mr. Dutton, I would only ask fellow counselors if we could just let um Mr. Dutton get through the update and reserve questions till the end. Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, counselor. Um I'll start with the Mitchell School update. It's always a hard uh act to follow a fire chief um because because it is. Um the Mitchell School uh foundation work has begun uh on the Mitchell, the new Mitchell uh footings and rebar uh being worked on this week uh on the budget side of the house. Um and that's from the construction side, you know, footings. Uh rebar foundation isn't very exciting work, but obviously it's the foundation and by definition it's critically important. So um but that is going on and uh and we are watching that carefully. Um on the budget side, the good news is, um I think I reported last uh meeting that this most of all of the savings, just about all of the savings that uh we have seen in the bid results are going to accrue to the benefit of the town. Um the new project budget right now is uh that's been submitted to the MSBA for approval, sixty seven million, six hundred forty seven thousand, nine hundred eighty-two, uh which is obviously down from the original budget of eighty million, six hundred thousand. Uh we are estimating that our actual reimbursement rate is uh in the neighborhood of forty seven point eight percent versus the forty one percent that it it was earlier and that that changes simply by the the nature of the um the uh you know, the new numbers. Um so in terms of dollar figures, uh our estimates are that the town will contribute uh thirty-five million, three hundred and twelve uh and change and that the state uh will contribute thirty-two million, three hundred thirty-five uh and change. So uh these are tentative numbers I have to caution and we're still uh awaiting the MSBA's uh approval of those revised figures, which uh which is what they do. Um we did, as I think I reported to the council, we did go out to bond the project early uh earlier than normal. Um usually projects are built and then once uh the certificate of occupancy is done and all the uh numbers have been added up, then usually towns will go out to to bond once. We had a very unique opportunity because of the ultra-low interest rates um and worked very well with the uh the school, the district to um go out to bond early. Um and so we have, we have um come, excuse me, close in terms of bonding, come close to our thirty-five million dollar obligation. Um so there'll be very little additional bonding at the end of the project. So that is uh I think spectacular news and and uh Tony Solmonci, our finance director, will give give you a little bit of an update when when he visits the council um in the next month or so. Uh timeline is still uh projected uh to be uh to be accurate with a completion date of July of twenty twenty-two ready for occupancy and students in uh September of of twenty twenty-two. The next uh Mitchell School Building Committee meeting is Monday, April twelfth at six thirty PM. So I encourage anybody interested in the building uh process and in the decision-making process uh concerning the school um to to join that meeting, Monday, April twelfth at six thirty PM. And that's what I have on the Mitchell School.
Excellent. Uh any questions? Any town counselors?
Uh yes, Mr. President, uh thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, all the all yours.
Yeah, um so are we going, what when do you think we're gonna update the tax calculator there, Mr. Dutton?
Um I know that uh a lot of people are very anxious to update the tax calculator and.
That's all I'm asking. I hear it a lot.
Yeah, uh I do too. We are uh we don't want to put out um anything that has not been approved by the MSBA. So uh they have the final uh say on the revised budget and uh and we've done our estimates.
We're in a waiting game with the state of the Mother May I thing that we've talked about forever, right?
Pretty much. And and honestly, I think our figures are are close to exactly what will be approved, but uh we certainly don't want to put something out and then and then have to tell people, oh, no, it's not quite that. So.
So I appreciate, I appreciate the teamwork that you and and the finance director and the and the district have have done to get this in it, you know, obviously a a much lower number than initially anticipated and definitely at a lower interest rate than uh initially anticipated. And I probably bet the lower interest rate is going to help us more than the lower price.
Um that's actually, I I haven't seen that analysis yet. I know it's been done, but I.
Yeah, well, it'll be interesting to see. And you know, I I think I think you should put it up as testimony to, you know, you know, yours and mainly Tony's hard work and and the district's hard work and obviously the building committee's hard work to get those things done.
Well, I I appreciate that. I I would also add that that we have been quite lucky just in terms of the cycle and we've been able to identify, you know, what we now in retrospect think is a dip in interest rates that have at least municipal bond interest rates, which uh we've availed ourselves of. So I I think uh a little bit of luck and and certainly a lot of cooperation with the district has has gotten us to this point. So so far, so good.
Any other questions? Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, um Mr. President. Um Michael, is this um elementary school a twenty or thirty year bond bill, twenty to thirty?
Uh it's a, I I actually, I should not answer that. I believe it was a twenty-five year, but.
Twenty-five year.
But again, I don't want to put that on a website just yet until I can.
So and and the high school is is was that a twenty twenty-five year, do you know, and will that becoming off, the high school will be coming off um in the early stages of this coming on, is that?
Um there's the the high school is actually, I I don't remember the total bond period of the high school, but I know that there are about eleven years left on the on the largest portion. There are two, actually two bonds for the high school. The largest one is 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 got uh, I believe. Uh yeah, about twelve years left, eleven years left now. So um so this will, this will come on uh before that one is is done, obviously. But I think I think uh the the difference between what we had anticipated, the average increase to the fa- the average family uh home uh would be and what it actually will be will be quite dramatic. I think it'll be a lot less than we had originally estimated.
Thank you.
Any other councils? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Uh item B, COVID nineteen update.
COVID nineteen update. Um we uh we uh continue to see uh slighter declines in infection rates uh right now. Uh we seem to be hovering about thirty to forty community cases uh over the past couple of weeks. Uh BSU only has one now in quarantine, so so I do have to give uh the university a lot of credit for for the way they've approached uh COVID. It's been quite effective uh in controlling the their uh cases. Our infection rate uh also continues to drop. It's now uh two point five. So about uh four weeks ago, it was uh over five percent. Uh then it dropped uh to three point one, two point nine. And now we're at uh at a much more comfortable two point five. So so that's encouraging as well. Uh I think everybody knows we've opened Town Hall for business. Um and uh we do ask folks that are in the building to uh maintain proper distances and also to uh wear masks in the building and the public areas of the building. Uh but but it is open for business. Um and I think as the the fire chief pointed out, the state has told us that it will not ship vaccine to local communities. We know that uh with rare exception and uh and I know our emergency team is working hard to secure whatever vaccines we can get specifically for um you know, some of the the uh elder uh residential uh areas and also homebound uh seniors. So we're we're doing our hardest to to continue to uh supply um uh vaccines for those folks. Um we don't know if we'll have luck in that area, but we do continue to uh to make that effort. Um also continuing to work with uh BSU and and other area communities on a regional uh solution. Uh but I don't have any uh update on that at this point. Um it's been somewhat silent from DPH uh on that. So that's what I have on on COVID, but happy to answer questions.
Couple of questions, yeah, Mr. President.
Counselor Gallagher.
Couple of questions, if I could, Mr. President. Uh Michael, um the one point nine trillion dollar stimulus package that was passed, many communities have already chimed in to say that they're going to get X and they're going to get X. So what should we expect here in Bridgewater from that one point nine trillion dollars?
Um something less than one point nine trillion dollars. Um we did get um some estimates from Congressman Lynch's office. Uh we are looking at an allocation of two point seven million um and which is quite generous, I think, other than Brockton uh in Plymouth. That's the most in Plymouth County. Um that hasn't, obviously, how it's early, that hasn't been confirmed yet. Um and we we still uh await rules and regulations about exactly how that can be spent, but it is, I can tell you based on the legislation that was passed, that the um the this this chunk of money has a lot uh has fewer restrictions uh tied to it than the CARES Act funding uh which we were using. Um and we will continue to use throughout the the end of the calendar year. So so it looks like two point seven is what's allocated uh what we actually can avail ourselves of. I'm I'm not quite sure yet.
All right, could could that money be used for, for example, some of the deficiencies that we noticed during COVID nineteen, perhaps equipment that we could have upgraded, you know, the fire department, no, police department? Um could that money be used to, you know, upgrade that equipment? So if something like this were to happen again, they might have or, you know, if something that they were to happen again soon, that we would have um modernized equipment to be able to uh you know, work with these issues. So I guess what I'd like to know maybe for the next meeting or when you get a chance is what what can we do with that money and what can it be used for? I mean, there isn't any, we don't really owe anything, right? There's no debt involved in this COVID nineteen, right? We've we've paid our bills and we've, you know, we've done very well.
Nope, absolutely.
So my next question is, you said the Town Hall is is reopened. That does that, did you, does that also mean you don't have to make an appointment? You can just go in and do your business?
Yep, that is correct.
Very good. All right, thank you.
And I just to follow up on on counselor's question about um you know, replacing capital assets uh to the extent we can, we we absolutely are looking at uh both both CARES and uh the A ARP, American Rescue Plan Act money uh to be able to upgrade equipment where we can. Um the the American Rescue Plan uh has, it's a little quirky. It's, you know, it sounds very generally like it's for COVID-related expenses, but it also can help offset some of uh infant water and sewer infrastructure costs. Um so so uh we'll we'll be looking at that as well. But I can get uh get a more, a fuller report on that and and how we would anticipate spending that money. Um certainly at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Counselor Fitzgibbons.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um Mr. Dutton, one of the challenges um last year to the um organizations using Legion Field, especially at Bridgewater Little League, was the lack of access to bathroom facilities uh because of COVID cleaning protocols, et cetera. So a- as you look at where you may want to allocate money, I I'd I'd strongly suggest looking at making sure that um Mr. Simons and his staff have the appropriate resources to actually allow uh restaurants to be open at uh at Legion Field. Um you know, they cleaned in an appropriate way uh so that people um people are able to avail themselves of that, those facilities.
I will, I will make note of that and discuss that with uh Mr. Simons, absolutely.
Uh Counselor Chase.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Uh if I could please, uh Mr. Dutton, I'm just curious whether you are aware if if the town has um has confirmed the presence of any of the uh the B one one seven variant uh in our area. Uh that's the uh the UK variant that is um increasingly becoming the dominant strain of the virus.
Uh I can certainly check on that, counselor. I know that uh prior to last week, we had not seen that variant. I have not gotten an upgrade uh update on on uh on the specific uh viruses, but I'm told that uh I'm told that we don't think we have any of that, but I can double check. Thank you.
Any other counselor? Uh seeing none, I just have a quick uh couple of comments, Mr. Dutton, before we move on. Um and I'll I'll leave them to you, but they're just things that I hear in the discussion of COVID nineteen. Uh the first one was listening to the fire chief's presentation uh that the oldest ambulance that the town owns was dedicated to COVID response. It would certainly make sense to me that under the CARES Act, we could purchase a new ambulance if it's specifically de- dedicated to COVID. And once we're through that, you know, put it into service. So I'd really like to see us pursue that avenue. It seems like one that would make sense. The other thing is, listen to the discussions uh Counselor Fitzgibbons made about the rec department. There's nothing more important right now for the children in this town to really get back to sports and outdoor activities. And if the bathrooms are going to become an issue, obviously, that's a problem. I I would wonder why the school district has hired a number of uh staff under CARES Act, why the rec commission wouldn't be looking to do the same. I'm sure there's a number of high schools that would be willing to work part-time, non-benefit positions that are fully refunded in order to maintain the bathrooms and some of the extra facilities to keep things clean. Um again, I'm not an expert, but I'm just hearing the conversations, thinking, why don't we take advantage of the same thing? Um and I think that uh actually was my s- last comment. So uh with that said, I would move on to item C, uh fiscal twenty-two budget.
Oh, excuse me. All right, the twenty-two budget, I don't have a whole lot to report. We're tentatively encouraged uh by uh our revenue trends. Uh cau- I should say cautiously encouraged by the revenue trends. Uh and we are, uh I believe, on track to present a balanced budget on April first. Um I know the finance department, the assistant town manager have worked really hard with all our departments uh as well as the district uh to come up with uh with a reasonable budget. Um given the constraints certainly that COVID presents us um in terms of operating budget. Uh but I think I think we'll get there um uh squeak over the line, so to speak, and present a a balanced budget. Uh we had anticipated, if you recall, we had anticipated and were uh uh sort of planning on dipping into stabilization uh to the tune of at least what we had looked at last year. I don't think we'll need to do that um this year. Last year, we, well, I shouldn't say last year, during last year's planning process, but during this fiscal year, we we use one point six million dollars of uh our stabilization account. I don't think we're going to have to do that in FY twenty-two. That's good news. That's very good news. Um and I'm fairly confident that we'll be able to meet the expense demands with the revenues uh as estimated. We traditionally estimate revenues conservatively. Uh we don't um we don't uh really play around too much with the uh revenue estimates. We want to be very conservative there so that we don't ever have a revenue deficit. Um but I can say. But I can say that you will be seeing the operating budget and we have completed as well the Capital Improvement Plan. We're just about complete with that, so you'll see both of those presented together on April 1st. And that that's about what I have on the budget.
Excellent, thank you. Any counselors with any questions? Counselor Fitzgibbons, you shut off your audio. You gonna ask anything? Are you all set?
No, I'm all, I'm all set for right now. I was just waiting to see if someone else was going to ask a question, follow up, but. Clear concise presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our next item, item D, items for next meeting. Do any counselors have anything? Sorry, Counselor Gallagher. Mr. President, if I could, Mike, since there were a lot of questions raised at the beginning of the meeting about the use of Legion Field and. And so forth, could you, could we put this on the, under your report next, I believe it's. I believe we meet April 6th to discuss Legion Field and the use of it. And perhaps, I know when you were away, we we got some very good updates of what was happening. At Legion Field from your assistant manager, which is very helpful. But some of the things I heard tonight, I I wasn't really quite aware of, so. I'm not going to get into the semantics of 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 what actually took place, but I guess the biggest concern was. Was the the use of Legion Field and how, as far as a public safety issue. I can see the concern of moving the event there, but it sounds like it turned into a, I don't know, a concert or. I don't know, something, and I guess how, how, what is, what are the. Guidelines of using Legion Field for events like this and perhaps how? How, what happened Saturday came came about, could you just get an update? Because some of the, obviously, there were some concerns from the residents tonight.
That might be more appropriately discussed, is discussed in a public forum in executive session. With the anticipation of potential litigation based on some of the stuff that I heard tonight. I I don't know the details, but I want to be cautious about that. And it it may make sense if if that is something that you feel the counselors need to discuss. That it that it be discussed in executive session in anticipation of potential litigation before we have it discussed in a public forum.
Well, I guess all all I was, all I was really asking for was is to to. Under the Town Manager's report, just give us, give the townspeople and us the the ground rules of what has to take. What you have to do to use Legion Field. That's kind of what I want an answer to is. You know, in order for. You know, what what else is happening behind the scenes, you know, I don't know, and when I have to know, I'll, I guess I'll be told or. Or so forth, but. I hope that we get a report about the events and if there's anything further, but there seems to be some concerns from residents. As to. The use of Legion Field and and so forth, so I think we need to clarify what the process is to use it.
I I think, you know, as long as it's within, you know, specific parameters, I think that makes sense. I just want to be careful that that conversation doesn't address issues that could. Become litigation at some point, and and that's as much for the sake of the council as it is for the town. I just want to be, I want to be very sensitive about this issue because I I know a lot of people are concerned about it. So my preference is that those discussions before they ever get into a public forum are discussed in executive session. So that the parameters are very clearly set about what we should be talking about in public and what we should not be.
And could I just interject, Counselor Gallagher, just to respond to Attorney Rollins? I I think what you're asking, for me, I want much more detail. I don't think just the permitting process is at issue here, based on the amount of emails and the response from citizens. So, I mean, certainly it's up to the Council President to figure out how that happens. But I just wanted to reach to you to say, I I think that there's more that we need to know than that goes beyond just. How they end up at Legion Field, such as security concerns and costs and those kinds of things. So I think this the safer, more pragmatic route is probably to have an executive session where this is the topic. If that makes sense, and if Attorney Rollins is okay with that as well as the President.
I I would prefer that before we have the discussion at a town meeting. I think you all need to make sure that you've been educated from every angle, obviously. And so that that discussion in a public town meeting can be meaningful and and well-educated, that's all.
Okay, then I will, then, you know, if there are things that I need to know or things that we all need to know as counselors, then. We should certainly know that and we should have an executive session. I'll leave that to you, Mr. President, and the Town Manager for. A a a meeting, you know, on on April 6th. Thank you. Is there any other town council that has something to bring forward for the next meeting? You can do that now or the usual email from Anne to all of us to get that to the Town Manager in time. Seeing no comments, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, J, Discussions. I don't see that there are any. Then move to K, Committee Reports. Are there any members of the council that wish to provide a committee report? I don't see any, so the next item on the agenda, letter L, Legislation for Action. Ordinance D, FY21006, General Ordinance, Amended Administrative Code. Part 2, Article 3, Section 7 and 16. At their meeting held on 3/1/21, the Rules and Procedures Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of this measure. This measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website, therefore may be finally considered this evening. Motion to approve.
Mr. President?
Second.
Mr. President, quarter.
Sure, hold on, Mr. Mr. Fitzgibbons, will you?
I'll defer to Mr. Wood.
Thank you. According to our, and I don't have, from a charter and or rules. Because Mr. George is the sponsor of this item, it can't be brought up tonight. And where it was advertised, I just want to see if we can ask Attorney Rollins if we can just continue it without needing to re-advertise.
Yeah, I think because it was previously advertised, so long as you announce the continuance on this date to a date certain, I think you're fine.
Mr. President, could I reclaim the floor?
Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Is, and I I just ask Mr. Wood if there's a reason to postpone this. Or if it's just.
Our our rules say that it cannot be brought up.
Well, then, then I I could make a motion to suspend the rules on this and we could move forward on it. Want to move forward on it, I guess that's my question.
I I want to, no, I'm in favor of this. I just want to not suspend the rules because, you know, it sets bad precedent. I think it's a charter item. I can't find my charter right now, maybe Mr. Rollins has it. That we can't bring an item up that's where the sponsor's not here.
Is that, Mr. Gallagher? I mean, I I I understand what Bill Wood's saying, but I I think that would only pertain to if a counselor no longer is serving on the council. Not if they're absent.
If if they're not at the meeting, we can't bring an item up that they've sponsored.
Attorney Rollins, would you be able to provide some guidance?
I'm actually reviewing, looking through the charter right now to see if I can find that section, if you guys want to continue on. But I I'm looking through the charter as you speak.
Make a motion to take, to. Take up new business, item N.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
I just wanted for clarification, we're moving to what Counselor Fitzgibbons?
Item N, New Business.
And, okay, thank you. I guess.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Okay, excellent, moving on, and New Business, A, Order 0FY21032. Loan order, loan authorization, Curve Street, Water Main. Town Manager, Mr. Dutton, would you like to speak?
Mr. President, the, this corrects a, one of the last pieces of Bridgewater that is not connected with. Town water. It also improves the circulation, which is critically important. Because of the 148 homes being built on, just off of Curve Street. It improves the water quality. When you have circulation, it improves water quality for all of the users along that particular line. So we have gotten a grant award of $225,000 to offset the overall cost. But the the council has to authorize the full amount in order to avail ourselves of the project. And also of the grant funded.
I make a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion? Here and none, this requires a roll call vote.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Thank you. Let us, Attorney Rollins, so we all set?
So as, I don't know if you want to vote to go back into the last section. Just parliamentary procedure-wise, so that we can take up what you all were discussing previously.
Well, it continues on just by the course of action.
So as it relates to the rules and procedures of your body, that's what governs it. It basically says, in the event that the sponsoring member of any order resolution or other matter is not presented. When the clerk reads said matter, the president shall instruct the clerk to withdraw said matter from consideration at the meeting. And obviously, you know, you you guys can vote to not follow the rules at at this point in time. Based on this, or you can follow that rule and procedure, but obviously you would have to vote to not follow that specific rule or procedure.
So I'd I'd renew my motion to suspend the rules regarding the sponsor's presence and take up. Ordinance D, FY21006.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Counselor Wood?
So again, I'm in favor of the actual item. I'm not in favor of suspending the rules. Because this is why we have the rules in place, so that when a sponsor is absent, the body can't just override what the sponsor wanted to do. Or have the sponsor speak in favor of any amendments that were made or against any, anything that was done. So so the role was placed there just so the sponsor had a voice in the matter. In the past, we've cured this by having multiple sponsors, but so I'll vote against the the motion. Eventually, when it comes back next time, if that's successful, then I'll vote in favor of the of the item.
Counselor Gallagher? I think, I think it's, I and I hope that my colleagues support the suspension of the rules. Because this is the final step in in voting this ordinance. I mean, it was presented to us, it went to committee. It came back to us, and then it went to advertising. If this were the first, maybe the second step, I could see some. I could see Counselor Wood's concern, but since this is the last step, it's been advertising, I I don't see it being an issue.
And just for clarification, Mr. President, I I believe this probably requires a two-thirds vote to pass the suspension of the rules.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion by counselors? Here and none with the roll call vote.
Uh, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Five in favor, two against.
Okay, moving on to the original motion to approve, motion to approve. Ordinance FY21006, amended administrative code. Have a motion to approve.
I already made it, I believe.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Souza, any additional questions, Mr. Souza?
No, but as a member of that committee, we discussed this issue very in length, and we thought that it was a good one, and we passed it on to the council for approval.
Counselor Fitzgibbons?
Nothing, thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Wood?
I I'm actually very much in favor of this. It also shows how we, how we go and change the administrative code. Proactively whenever we see a deficient deficiency, so hopefully this passes.
Excellent, thank you. Any other counselors? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Okay, excellent, moving on, M, New Business, excuse me, M, Old Business, I see none. Moving on to O, Citizens Comments. Again, would open this up, the Citizens Comments. If you could, just state your name and home address and try to keep comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody?
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Um, I have had a few people chat during the meeting stating they'd like to speak.
Okay, you could pick those for me and just make sure they're unmuted.
Yep, in order that they came through, Samantha M.
Samantha M. Samantha M, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect, thank you.
All right, awesome. I just wanted to kind of jump on. I had received a couple of messages from the community that you guys brought here talking.
Samantha, can I just interject? I just need your full name and your home address.
My name is Samantha Muse, and I reside at 26 Beaver Dam Road in Carver, Massachusetts. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I had received.
Point of, point of order. I don't believe she's a citi- citizen of the town of Bridgewater.
Yeah, she just stated for the record, she's a citizen of Carver. This is only for residents of the town of Bridgewater.
Okay, I own a business in Bridgewater. I don't, I can't speak during comment.
No, I have to be a citizen.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, Samantha.
All right, thank you.
You're always welcome and free to email any member of the town council as an ultimate means of communicating. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And do we have somebody else?
Karina?
Karina?
I'm actually in the same boat as Samantha, so I will email. Thank you so much.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Steve Rogan.
Steve Rogan?
Hi, Steve Rogan, 36 Howard Street. Thank you for listening to me again. I just wanted to make a few quick comments. All last week, the the events of, going, leading up to last Saturday, and seeing how things happened, I was, I was very disheartened. I'm a, and as someone who, for the past three years, I've been on volunteers. Volunteer committees, and it was really disheartening to see what was going through. But what I ended up doing was, I I I almost had the thought of like, if this is going to happen, if this can go through. What's the point? Why, like, why am I volunteering? But this proves why I'm supposed to volunteer. This is why, like, like, when, when I, if 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 I have a a vision of what Bridgewater could be. Or if I had, if I, if I want to make a change in Bridgewater, I don't quit the the committees that I, that I. make a change in Bridgewater, I don't quit the committees that I, that I want to volunteer on. I join committees. So I, my first comment is, if people have concerns, if people want to make change, join a committee, join, join one of the committees and make your voice heard. And I just wanted to send that out. And as a committee member, I wanted to mention a few things. First, for, in regards to Chief McDermott from the Fire Department, I am the Chair of the Historical Commission in Bridgewater. And if anyone's interested on Facebook, I run the Bridgewater Historical Commission Facebook page. And I have a whole album of the history of the Bridgewater Fire Department. I have photos of the original fire station. I have photos of the, all the original trucks, the storied history of the, of the Fire Department. It's really interesting. I'd encourage anyone to go onto Facebook, look up Bridgewater Historical, Historical Commission. And it's there, it's, it's, it's a great thing to look through. There's a lot of history. And then I'm also on the Community Preservation Committee, and I just wanted to make a comment that tomorrow at 6 o'clock, the Community Preservation Committee is having an open forum, a public hearing about the CPA, the past, the past, present and future. And I would encourage all residents interested, see where your CPA money is going towards. Come to the public hearing, hear what's, what we've used our, use CPA money for, see what we are, who we are and what we can do and it, it, just something to improve the community. So once again, thank you for listening.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Anybody else, Ann?
Yes, Mrs. Hanson.
Mrs. Hanson.
Hi, Janet Hanson, 665 Pleasant Street. I just have a comment that it's been brought up, I think, in the past at some of the meetings. We as a public are commenting at these meetings, but you can't have a dialogue. So in order for us to know that we're being listened to, it was brought up about acknowledging us. I think tonight, a little bit with Mr. Gallagher asking the questions, because he did hear what the beginning public was talking about. Is there a way of, of putting it in the Town Council Charter or rules that there can be a dialogue or, you know, or acknowledge what we're saying or talking about? If not at that same meeting, the next meeting, make us feel like we're being listened to and that the answers to our questions will be presented. If not at that meeting, at the following meeting, to give you time to respond. That makes us feel like we're being listened to. If we can get answers to our questions, that would be great and put it on the gender for the next, you know, write down our comments, because you have it on video and audio. Jot it down, so this will be part of the next agenda to answer the questions that some of the public have on their public comments. But I think, thank you and thank everybody for their time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. We appreciate the comments. And is there anyone else?
Yes, Ms. Fleisch-Cordero.
Hi, Rebecca Fleisch. Thank you. Rebecca Fleisch-Cordero, 135 Deerfield Drive. Just a couple of questions, one question about the town charter and one about something that appears on the website about the Recreation Commission in relation to what took place at Legion Field on Saturday. So in the town charter, I won't read the whole thing, but it's on page 238. It's under this section, Chapter 157, Parades and Public Gatherings. And there's two sections in there and it does refer to permits being requested from the Chief of Police for, for those kinds of gatherings. So I just thought that I would bring that to your attention. I did hear you say after Counselor Gallagher's discussion that y'all are going to have an executive session about this, so I thought I would just note that that what appears on page 238. And also on the webs, on the town website, under Parks, there's a paragraph that says there's a great demand, I'm turning my head to look at my other monitor. There's a great demand for the use of the recreation facilities in town, however used by town groups or organizations for a fee with the permission of the Recreation Commission. So that would also seem to be in conflict with what happened on Saturday. And they're also kind of in conflict with each other. So I clearly have questions about that and also thought it would be fodder for your executive session. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Thanks for coming out tonight. Ann, is there anyone else?
Mr. Beal.
Mr. Beal.
Thanks, Ann. Thank you, Vice President Rushton, Keith Beulton, Fieldcrest Drive. And I just wanted to take a couple of seconds to thank the Fire Chief for his report tonight. I want to thank him for his service, along with the entire department. He said that the reflection of the department and how good they are, what they do is, is that we just don't notice them, but I just want and hope that the entire department, along with the, with the chief, understand that there's many of us that do notice. We do feel blessed by their presence here and we understand exactly how committed are both our police and fire are to this town, especially if you've been here over the years and have seen some of the challenges, especially when it came to the budget that they've been able to overcome. And that comes from their commitment to our town as individuals, as professionals. And it truly comes from the leadership that we've been so, so blessed to have throughout at least the 28 years that I've been here in town. And so I just wanted to make sure he understood that it is noticed and recognized by many of us. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate those comments, especially the Fire Department and the Chief. Any other citizens' comments? Ann, do you see any? I do not see any on my end.
I don't see anybody else. I'm checking my chats to make sure. Ms. Gascón, he wants it to be noted that the CPC hearing is at 6:30 tomorrow evening.
Excellent, thank you.
But I don't see any other raised hands.
Okay. Yes, with that, we'll move on to council comments, starting with Council.
Can I interrupt? I just, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I just, I actually want to hear from the business owners that were told they can't speak. I know that other town councils can't approve that, so I figure Bridgewater can as well, but it's.
Yeah, Mr. Daniels, that's really not for right now. We've moved on from citizen comments, but you're more than welcome to email any one of the town councils your concerns about out of town residents speaking at the town council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Fitzgibbons?
None tonight, thank you.
Counselor Souza?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the chief for coming in, giving us a very, very enlightening presentation from his department. And we do recognize a lot of stuff that he does and his men do and women and appreciate everything that they do. Thank you. And I want to thank, I'm not even going to try to pronounce her last name. So I'll just say I want to thank Julia for stepping up and becoming part of our committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Souza. Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Mr. President, good job stepping into the role tonight. I think this is a meeting, even though I spoke a lot. You know, I, so, so I'm a rules guy. We've gone through a lot on this council. And the reason that I brought up the rule before was because I believe that we need to follow the rules. I don't like to slow government down, but, you know, we set up the rules and the rules can be adjusted without, you know, suspending them. And I just think that, you know, we've been through so much, it really makes sense to continue to support our rules, because in specifically, if you wanted to move things out of order on the agenda, you'd have to suspend the rules to do that too. But I've never called that for about five or six years now, so it's just not worth the effort. Anyway, good meeting tonight. I appreciate the chief coming in. Hearing about the Fire Department again, you know, in the budget process, we always talk about trying to fund a four and a half minute response. You know, he talked about a three to four minute. And sometimes it gets really tough when the calls get busy. But I think they do a tremendous job and, you know, we've had Station 2 down the street here for, I think it's now 14 years, doesn't seem that long, but yeah, it's time to move on to a new station, so I look forward to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wood. Counselor Chase?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I think I would just like to say that I'm very happy that a number of people have come forward this evening to express their concerns and raise questions about the, about the event of last Saturday, or events, I should say. And I think that it's, I think it's appropriate for us to, as a council, consider them and to try to respond to the questions that have been raised. And I think the appropriate venue will be the executive session that has been proposed for us. So I'm certainly looking forward to that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Counselor Loesch?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. Well, spring, spring has sprung in Bridgewater and as everybody can see, there's a lot of trash everywhere. You, I, and it's not just Bridgewater. Every, every town I go through, the sides of the streets look, sides of the roads look horrible. So I would ask everyone to do what they can. Hopefully, we did not have a townwide cleanup in 2020, obviously. I don't know if there will be one organized later this spring or early summer, but I'd like to try to see one go forward in some sort of safe manner. So we can clean up our downtown and out, the outskirts of our town out on 104 and 18 and 28 and downtown area, because there's just trash everywhere. I know I'll do my part. But I would, would hope that we can show everyone how proud we are of our community and pick up our trash and clean it up for the summer ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gallagher. So I'll try to be brief. I just wanted to talk about a few thoughts mainly revolving around what occurred last Saturday in town. There's, there's a lot of anger and emotion as a result of the rally demonstration, whatever you want to call it, at Legion Field. I do want to caution those citizens in this community that public safety, many town employees, particularly the Assistant Town Manager, Kim Williams, worked very, very hard. Tried to balance what different groups were saying, whether it was the truth or not, whether things changed at the last minute or not. And I hope that moving forward, that we can use last Saturday as a sort of a momentum to learn, rather than to point fingers, why this didn't happen, why that didn't happen. I also want to thank all of the public safety staff who are quite frankly physically and verbally abused down at Legion Field, as well as the other 40 communities in our membership in Semlick who provided those services and extra police officers to protect citizens in this town to go out and peacefully demonstrate the things that they believe in. So I just want to caution people, there's a lot of angry emails and I get it and I understand your anger, but I just want to say that many of our town employees who are faced with managing that task, this is a first time. We're not experts at it. And we did the best that we could do and we hope to learn from that. And I think that when this process is over, it's opened up a lot of new opportunities for us to either draft policy, look at costs and permitting, and do a better job of understanding, you know, what's going on in town, particularly at the field. So I just wanted to say that because I think that a lot of the town employees really, really worked very, very hard under trying circumstances. And I'd like to just personally, as a member of the town council, thank them for what they did. With that, I have nothing else. Move to Q. Executive Session, seeing that there's none. I'll move to adjournment, entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second, second, Mr. Souza. Any discussion? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.